October 5th, 2023, 6:00 PM at Oak Ridge City Hall for a regular city council meeting. First order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, would you take the role, please?
Councilor Proctor.
Here.
Councilor Bjornson.
Here.
Councilor Tarman.
Here.
Councilor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Cetin.
Here.
Councilor Kenyon.
Here.
Councilor Hollis.
Here.
All right, everyone's here. Next is item four additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Do any councilors have any additions, corrections, or adjustments recommended? Okay, and I have none. We'll roll into number five, which is public comment. Are there any folks on the Zoom platform that have a public comment? Okay, anyone in the room have a public comment? You can come up here, sir, and state your name and city of residence.
I'm Joe Felby. I live here in Oak Ridge.
No, Oak Ridge is fine.
Okay. Been having trouble with my water meter. Need to have it fixed. What's happening is the water to get underneath the glass and make it impossible to read. So there's a difference between. Now there's a difference between your guys' readings.
Understand.
And saying I use 3,000 gallons of water in this month. On average, a thousand gallons is all we ever use, me and my wife. Both elderly. And he's handicapped. And I admit, I get upset when anybody pulls that crap, pulls that stuff on me. Well, find out what's going on. The only way I can do that is to read that meter every day and keep track of it. Then see if it matches your guy's paperwork. That's the only way we can keep you honest. And it's not the, it's not just me either. You guys read Facebook or Facebook, whatever they call it. You can see that what the comments are. And at 3,000 gallons. I'm the least of three people that I can figure out about that. One said she got it for seven gallons. No, that's it. They got it for five. And then another guy says, well, it's funny, I get a. I get a reading every month. And this is a texting reading, 1,000 gallons, 1,000 gallons. How much are the chances of that?
In my may, I think Greg and I can explain part of that. So we only bill by thousand gallons.
Right, I got that.
So some months, if you go over that. You go over the point where it triggers the next thousand, you're billed for that. But then you have rooms, the next month it'll be lower. Not as well. So let's say you use, in a three-month period, you use 1,600 gallons every three months. So during one of those months, you may go twice because the first month, 1,600 gallons, the next month is 1,000, like 2,000. So it's well, so there is a point where it will trigger an extra thousand, even though it's the same usage of the month because you use over 1,000.
So the bill is not displaying the hundreds figures, it's only displaying the thousand.
We only charge it 1,000, yes.
But you're actually tracking everything.
Yes, we each put the gallon, but the bill only goes to the thousand. So if you use 1,200 gallons in one month, you can charge for 1,000, but that 200 you use is still counted for next month. So it doesn't reset at 1,000 gallons each month.
Well, we'll find out after, but I gotta have that glass repaired so there's no water being put in there. I won't be able to do it. And I have a legal right to have that water meter fixed so I can read it.
So that is a conversation issue a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to drive like a hairdryer.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna run out there with a hair dryer.
Dry it out.
It's on your radar and you go out and see if his meter can be repaired.
Yeah, we are on site. I changed myself.
Okay. Well, thanks for your comments and we're going to turn our attention.
And what's gonna happen?
They're gonna come out and look at your meter and see if he did. He's gonna revisit it, see if it can be repaired. If it can't be repaired, it'll be replaced.
That's good. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments in the room? Okay, moving on to item six, mayor comments and announcements proclamations. All I have is they've set a date and time for the library after dark silent auction. And that'll be Saturday, October 21st at 6:00 PM. In the library, good conversation, beer and fine wine will be served. Hopefully, we can get through the agenda today. And proceeds go to the purchases of the children's educational activities, DVDs, and books, and you're taking donations until 14. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Any council comments or announcements to be made? On the Zoom, anyone speak up if you do. In the room? Council Kenyon?
Council Comment. I noticed, I was, I was not present for the last meeting, but I noticed right before that meeting, an email went out from the mayor to Brock Buckmeyer regarding the bus fare. And where he apologized.
What was going on, sorry?
I said the wrong, I'm sorry, Butterfield, you're right. Apologize on behalf of the city. And I just was thinking that there wasn't a discussion or a vote on that. So is that appropriate would be one question? Also, it said that I, well, it didn't say name, but I know it was me, was really Brock during the prior meeting, which I completely disagree with. I asked a question, we had a conversation, there was no grilling. And it also said that he would ensure that the minutes reflect the bus fare's exemption. Which was not discussed at that prior meeting or shown at that meeting. So the minutes really can't reflect such an update.
Okay, is this a council announcement, or is it, did you, did you ask anything about it yet, or?
It said council comments. So I got my comment.
Yeah, Carol. All right, moving on to item eight, consent agenda. Do you hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
You're second. All right, motion made by Council Kenyon, seconded by Council Tarman. Any opposed? Speak up. All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number nine, appointments. 9.1 is library board application of Lori Patty.
Mayor, yes, we've got three applications for you tonight. First one is for a library board. Which Lori Patty has applied.
Okay, and we have two openings there, right?
Yes, second one is for Sima Love of Beers. Yes, you are.
And is, is Ms. Patty on the Zoom, do you know?
She mentioned that she would be traveling and may or may not be able to be on. So if she's not here, I told her we would have to move it to the next website. He's not, unless she's tall.
Let's, let's pause it. Her application, if she does show up, we'll bounce back to it. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next is 9.2, library board application for Ms. Level Beers. Do you hear a motion?
I move, we appoint Sima Love of Beers to seat number two of the library board for a term expiring in December of 2025.
I'll second that.
A council made, motion made by Council Kenyon, seconded by Council Coker. Questions of Ms. Level Beers? Or the staff? I know that you're on a couple of committees or at least one committee already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, two.
Two, yes. You're a busy woman.
Yes, I like being busy. I'm retired, you know, I'm used to doing stuff, so I'm gonna stay busy. You know, I like libraries, I like books. I was one of those geeky kids that underneath the blanket with the flashlight and stuff like that. The first, the first big book that I read, I guess, it wouldn't let this so by the, the pushcart wars, and I read that when I was six. So there's no, no way to go, because that was the one about the trucks and the pushcart. So, but I bet, so, you know, I love books, I love to read, I like libraries. You know, I still remember how to do the, um, Dewey Decimal, the card catalog. So, you know, I like, you know, I remember when I was in college, you know, you had to go up top. Then in order to find the book that you were looking for, like, you know, libraries are it's something that's very close and very dear to me. So I'm glad to be on the committee and have that.
Glad to have your application. Any other questions before we go to a motion or a vote? All right, Jackie, do you call for a vote, please?
Council Bjornson.
I.
Mayor Cetin.
I.
Council Hollis.
I.
Council Tarman.
I.
Council Kenyon.
I.
Council Proctor.
Hi.
Council Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Welcome aboard the library board. Have you met Georgie Samuelson yet?
I may have to, there's a lot of people that I see, but I don't know their name, so I don't know.
Yeah, she is going there and meet her. She's the kind of the one that librarian that runs the place with all the volunteers. And it says here you're going to be seat two of the library board and the term expires in December of 2025, but you can obviously reapply. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to 9.3, planning commission application for Ms. Metcalf. James?
So we've got Megan Metcalf who is online. Like for the planning commission. She's currently the chair of the RTMP, the RTMP. It's filled out, yeah, they should have any questionnaire for the planning mission.
Great. Do you hear a motion?
I move, we appoint Megan Metcalf to seat three of the planning commission for a term expiring in December of 2026.
You're second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Council Tarman, seconded by Council Kenyon. Any questions of Ms. Metcalf? On planning commission, applying for planning commission? Please.
Um, Megan, I really appreciate your work on the RTMP committee. I was just curious, what is your interest in planning?
Um, I, in general, just want to be more involved in the community. And James had mentioned that the planning commissions had openings, and so I decided I would apply.
Excellent, thank you. And, and he did familiarize you with what they do, the kind of work they do?
Yes.
Excellent. That's all I got.
Any other questions? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please? Let me restate the motion first. That was to appoint Megan Metcalf to seat three of the planning commission for a term expiring in December of 2026.
Council Brewer.
I.
Council Bjornson.
I.
Council Hollis.
I.
Council Kenyon.
I.
Council Proctor.
I.
Council Tarman.
I.
Mayor Cetin.
I. All right, motion passes unanimously. Welcome to the planning commission. We're looking forward to have you on there.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item 10, business from the city council. Item 10.1, change order for Cherry Street project. James?
Very brief on the overview, that was both level now, as to where, so the Cherry Street project is starting and in the project, we realized there was a little, there's additional work we need to do at the bottom of the street to prevent the roof from being disintegrated by flooding, putting in basically a drain pipe, which will put us a little bit further than the $250 grant filed.
$25,000.
$25,000.
Excuse your errors, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we're gonna be over by $8,709, the cost to the city. But it's gonna make sure the street actually lasts. Ed Hodges was going to be here tonight. He's, that's an emergency. So he could not be here, but I'm ready to prepare to answer any technical questions. And one thing to keep in mind, so these all center around water management. As many of us know, there is a spring right in the hillside that runs year round. So both these are in relationship to managing that water that is coming out of the hillside. So the first change order is the works installed perforated four-inch pipe to collect the groundwater or what we get before it becomes surface water, except the spring water. So the perforated pipe, then that runs down into the collection system. And during the site visit, it was determined that we'd silly yeah, clean up. So that's what that one there is for, so that the contractors will install four-inch cleanout in case pipe ever were to get clogged. We have mechanisms to clean it out. This was a, the conversation was, this type of pipe, it doesn't clog because of perforations. But nonetheless, it's still a good idea. At the end of the day, we made a conversation in site, that is what we all came up with. And then change order number two, save money. Originally, the water was to daylight out at the end, about 90 feet before First Street. And it was in daylight and then we would put in riprap, and then it would have been overland water flow. Which, the overland water flow in winter, just gonna, that's just gonna help the free soft cycle, freeze off cycle. And there's also a resident right in that area that we need to able to keep it out of there. So both of these were chosen after the, it was discussed onsite at the pre-construction meeting with the contractors where we all sat around them. gave some really good thought and as a whole in the group, we came to the conclusion that these are better products. And then change order number three is to remove $1,000, which would have been the riprap. It would have been where the spring daylight.
Okay, but he's all incorporated into change order one, because we only saw change order one.
You are correct, I'm terribly sorry. I had a number one on the.
Okay, yeah.
I'm saying, I'm sorry, yes.
Anyone?
Thank you for correcting. So.
Got it. All right, do I hear a motion on this?
I move to allow the CA to sign change order number one for the Cherry Street project.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Council Kenyon, seconded by Council Tarman. Questions of staff on this?
Of course. So I'm looking at the original bid. And storm drainage fee at C2 talks about a four-inch perforated HDTE drain liner sock. And there's a roughly five grand that we're spending on that. So what is the difference between that and the change order storm drain connections to four-inch HDTE and cleanout?
And number one on the agenda?
Yeah, on the change order, yeah. What's the difference between that and what was on the original bid?
Original bid, you know.
So it's just the cleanout that, okay. And that alone is 4,000.
So that.
Because it just says storm drain connections.
To the, yeah, to the four inches that we put in, and then with a cleanout. So that's gonna also connect. I don't believe that the.
There's two, excuse me, I'm sorry. There's two. There's one for 1,500, so that includes the cleanout. And then there's number one for four at $1,000.
So number one, sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
So number one was longer in connection. So that is where we're extending the, instead of daylighting it, we're extending another 87 feet to meet the storm drain.
So there's gonna be multiple pipes that run from the original location to the First Street. You were saying originally it was gonna stop like 90 feet short of First Street, and you're gonna put in the riprap, but now they're gonna extend both of the pipes out? Is that what you're saying? Because there's two separate pipes that it refers to, two four-inch, one without a cleanout, one with. And then an additional six-inch storm drain pipe solid to connection. So I'm just wondering about the, the three different sections. Because in the original bid, it calls for the drain pipe with the sock. So I'm just wanting to make sure that while this isn't double dipping.
No, because when, once onsite and when the, when the works had put in the sock, it was a little different due to geography and.
Okay. So that whole line, the whole one with the sock in general changed. So that is, are we being given any type of an adjustment since we've changed that?
Doesn't have to.
Well, because this is $5,000 that was included in the original 219,000. I'm, I'm rounding up. So that was five grand for that four-inch perforated HDTE drain pipe. But then, now we're asked, they're asking for an additional 6,500, excuse me, 5,500 for the two four-inch pipes, one with the cleanout. That's what I'm wondering. If there's adjusting, since it's a change order and we're removing the riprap and we're saving $1,000, is there any way that we can save any money with that change order where they adjust the original C2 line to accommodate for the new line? I'm just wondering if this is the same line or if it's a different one.
Um, this is where they were gonna put it in. We put it in a little bit farther up the hill as well. So we put in a piece, they're gonna put in a piece. So I do believe the answer, and we know, because we put in a piece and they're still putting in their piece as well. Or if this extends farther to the upper of the hill?
Yeah, but, but do you see what I'm talking about? On C2, they're charging us five grand for the pipe, and then they're charging us again on the change order for the pipe.
Right, so the C2 that we see here was in the original bid, and where the additional that they're asking for is that volume.
This, the 79 linear feet or the 80 linear feet. Okay, so this only extend, this five grand only extends down to the 80 feet above First Street, more or less. And then this is for the remainder. On the change order. Okay.
Any other questions? Council Kenyon?
Yeah, um, I was thinking about the project and I wanted to look it up on the, on our financial report to see where we stood in the street fund. I know it's only a 4% increase, which is that normally, that's 12%? Coming to council normally? Isn't there, isn't there a percentage that we're, that they're about to do change orders?
Is it, there isn't?
Without.
It's, but the original bid was 219.
Yeah, this is 4% of that. And, and that's fine, but I wanted to see where we were standing in that fund. And I noticed that our financial report that we received last month actually wasn't for August, it was for June. It was for the end of fiscal year '23, so we don't have current report of where we stand in the street fund. Do we know if there's any other excessive amounts of monies going out in the street fund that? And it's all that's come out of the street fund? Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, I know that we pay Mr. Hodges a fee for being on retainer. And that enables us to have a cheaper rate for his services. But I'm looking at this cost, and it seems extremely high. And I know it's engineering a street, that there's a lot. I'm just wondering what our hourly rate is for him, and if maybe things like this. I don't know. I'm looking at all the money we're putting out for something that's, I mean, engineering plans are, are tangible, but I just, in my opinion, 30 grand is a huge number. And I don't know how much engineers are, maybe 13, 14, but.
First word.
I know, I totally believe that. I'm just wondering, I mean, this is like a hundred yard long street, if that. Do we have a base rate that we pay, or is it just like here, Ed, have a project and let us know how much it costs to write it out? Was it something he estimates first and then we approve it?
So it's similar to our city attorneys. So they are on retainer at a lower rate than they're normally.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're sort of talking a hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
But, but we, but it's still a deal compared to if we just like called them up and say we want to hire you for this little project.
Yeah. I know it is what it is. I'm just saying like for future projects, is this, I mean, do we ever shopped around for different engineers or someone who's less expensive? I'm just curious.
We have.
Okay.
Need the person selecting an engineer. And an advantage to having an engineering record, which is, I guess, I'm gonna assume same phrase is on retainer. Is like with projects like these, every time there's an out, someone goes over $10,000. We would have to ask for three bits. We'd have to reach out to three hundred people. So there's, that improves as well.
Yeah.
Streamline. So that's where it does.
Okay.
But sometimes we do save money, like if it's a project for a bridge or something. But that would be common. If it's an easy project, we may contact Ed and he says, okay, yeah, I can do it. You know, you know, my rate is something a, a junior engineer could probably handle.
Okay, like a law assistant versus a lawyer type thing?
Yeah, but certainly, so we may then save money.
Okay.
So, and one of the comments is, I just said the last three, I'm sure we're missing the last, but there's a lot of things going on in the street, very steep.
Yeah. Okay. I just almost fell over when I saw that phrase, like, holy cow, that's a huge chunk out of our grant. So I understand it is, I know it's a super steep street and there's a lot of factors and so, but I also know there's just a lot of people that know what they're doing, working on it. So that's why I was wondering. So, okay, thank you.
Do you hear a motion on this? Do you invite them?
We're in discussion.
You sure?
She made the motion.
My number is wrong, you're sorry. Okay, um, any other questions? Is there enough ARPA money to pay this with ARPA funds, you know? Seems like it'd be eligible, okay. All right, there's no more questions. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Council Tarman.
I.
Council Kenyon.
I.
Council Proctor.
I.
Mayor Cetin.
I.
Council Brewer.
I.
Council Bjornson.
I.
Council Hollis.
I.
Right, motion passes. Moving on to 10.2, library silent auction alcohol permit for Saturday, October 21st, 6:00 PM. James?
Mayor, as you mentioned in your comments, I thought I was saying you're silent auction in the library on 10.1. You're going to serve beer and wine, library board with, really, the others as, as soon as it's sweet, servers permit. And then having, finding ways to make sure that is. And then finding ways to make sure that is monitored, uh, but they need, um, alcohol from the city. That. Those ten. That's not you, um, that's not you back here, sorry, I'm, I'm, my mind is today, sorry, all right, uh, is here also from library board. Questions, folks, about the event.
Okay, so I hear a motion on this.
I move to approve the library's alcohol permit for their silent auction in October twenty first.
You're second?
I'll second then.
All right, motion made by Councilor Turner, second by Councilor Brewer, any questions of staff or of? I mean. That sounds pretty easy. Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Counselor Yarson.
I.
Counselor Chauvin.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Hollis.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Mayor Cashion.
Hi. All right, motion passes, with the party, with the party continuing. All right, moving on to ten point three designation of agent form for FEMA hazard mitigation grant program, James.
Um, all right, so the FEMA grant that we just. Like for last week, for an million dollars requires this. Before we sign it, it it says resolution, but it does not have to be an official resolution, just a form. Mayor needs to sign. So it proves it, uh, saying that I am the city administrator able to apply for grants.
All right, do I hear a motion on this one?
I move to approve and allow the mayor to sign the FEMA designation of agent form. Certifying that the city administrator, James Clevenger, is the city's agent. Authorized to execute all forms and documents. For the purpose of applying for and obtaining financial assistance through FEMA grants.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. So why, that was long.
All right, motion made by Councilor Kenyon, second by Councilor Brewer, any questions of James on this? So one size fits all, any FEMA grant now, you're you're good.
I believe so.
Good.
Do you know what you're doing? Just kidding.
You should see the light screen.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Any other questions? Okay, the, I'm not gonna restate that motion, but, um, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Cashion.
Hi.
Counselor Hollis.
I.
Counselor Chauvin.
I.
Counselor Yarson.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
All right, motion passes. Onto ten point four, that's Green Waters Park Banner Bank Amphitheater Remodeling Bid Award. Okay, uh, for you started, any conflicts of interest to declare from anyone?
Um, I would like to declare a conflict, I'm one of the owners of On Top Construction, so I'll be recusing myself from vote.
Yeah, thank you. James?
All right, well, thanks to Banner Bank, uh, they, uh, wish to continue their sponsorship of the amphitheater. And they generously donate up to twenty thousand dollars for repairs, uh, plus a thousand dollars a year, uh, for ongoing repairs. In order to retain the sponsorship of the building. So we put out, uh, bids, local contractors, uh, sealed bids of, um, contractor did not know what the other was bidding. We received this from Alpine Ridge, Sam Park, and On Top Construction and Design, which is co-owned by Council Brewer. Uh, On Top Construction and Design was the lowest bid. And again, normally we would, this wouldn't happen to council because you're already aware of this. Because. The construction companies co-owned by council, we thought it appropriate bring this to council, uh, directly, so that it was on board. And included, uh, bids from all three bidders. So we'll see what those were. Yeah, the the services are all the same. So our recommendation is to, uh, work with the most there on top construction.
Okay, so you're motion?
I move to award the contract for the Banner Bank Amphitheater in Green Waters Park. Reciting project to the lowest bidder on top construction and design.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilor Kenyon, second by Councilor Coker, uh, questions of staff? On this, that's what can you?
It's not really a question, but I did notice in here that the, um. That it says that this was solicited, fired and this for becoming a city councillor. But I didn't hear you mention that, so I thought it should be on the record that. That we had no idea she was gonna become a councillor when these bids were requested.
Any other questions, staff? James, do you need a little wiggle room in here with the dry rot comments I saw in there, do you want a little wiggle room on the the ten percent or something like that and?
Yes.
Want us to consider that?
Yeah, so that is, and that was the bids that went out, because you you can't see it as dry rot until it's pulled off. And so that, that's standard on all of the. All of the bids, when all of the bidders were made aware that there would be some wiggle room.
No, my point is that, so it doesn't have to come back to us.
Well, I see.
You want like a ten percent or have us consider some percentage? Increase, change order, whatever you wanna tell it.
Well, perhaps up to twenty, but that one, uh, this is one we appreciate. I know that's one in ten percent of, but if the job like with this, I I won't be surprised if we reach the point.
So, yeah, the answer, can you?
So I would like to withdraw my motion, we see it. Um, I moved to award up to twenty thousand dollars. On the contract for the Banner Bank Amphitheater in Green Waters Park Reciting Project to the lowest bidder. On top construction and design.
I'll second that.
All right, again, ca- uh, motion made by Councilor Kenyon, second by Councilor Coker. Any further discussion on this? Okay, the motion was moved to award the contract for up to twenty thousand dollars for the Banner Bank Amphitheater in Green Waters. Park Reciting Project to the lowest bidder on top construction and design, is that good? All right, Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Hollis.
I.
Counselor Chauvin.
I.
Mayor Cashion.
Hi.
Counselor Yarson.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Okay, motion passes. Onto ten point five, that's the Boy Scouts Fee Waiver reimbursement request for Green Waters Park, James.
The request of, uh, five city councillors, uh, signed it was on last. Meeting's agenda, council. Local Boy Scout troops requesting fee waiver for Orange County Green Waters Park community center buildings. Those up to three, uh, improvement events for the Boy Scout troop. Normal cost to rent the community centers, eight dollars per day. So they had all three. Events. It would, uh, two hundred forty dollars value of movement. My staff recommendations, so obviously, uh, fifty percent on partial fee waiver suggested by Council Brewer. Uh, in last meeting, but these guys are requesting full. Chief Martin, the ball of the scouts is not able to provide states on patient.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this?
I move to approve a full fee waiver for up to three rentals of Green Waters Park community building for the Boy Scouts.
I'll second that.
Uh, I guess that was Councilor Jornton, all right? Motion made by Councilor Kenyon, second by Councilor Jornton. And discussion? At all? Okay, call for a vote, please, Jackie.
Counselor Chauvin.
May.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Hollis.
I.
Counselor Yarson.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Mayor Cashion.
No. Motion passes. Onto ten point six, Dogs of Valor Fee Waiver Request for Green Waters Park, James?
All right, similar to the last issue, five councillors have requested, you brought that reconsideration. Randy Volkerson, the founder of Dogs of Valor. Requesting fee waivers for. Five days of rentals at, uh, Green Waters Park Community Building, so that's four hundred dollar value. Those three events, Halloween costume party for dogs and their owners on November twenty sixth, will be to other. Sandwich workshop, December first through third. Um, although that date may change, uh, with my understanding, talking with Council Hollis, then, uh, Sir Volkerson. Uh, he has promised people be. Our Santa for the holiday parade, I think that's still, I don't think time, right, so I'll follow to address that during the discussion. And then, um, Christmas party, Friday, December fifteenth. For the Dogs of Valor program. My staff recommendation, getting the fifty percent fee waiver. For the first two events, late, the third event, the Christmas party for the Dogs of Valor program, I thought that's. It's not open to the public, so I thought that was not public. That was not a program participant.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this?
I move to weigh. All of the rental fees for the Dogs of Valor program at Green Waters Park on October twenty sixth. And December first through third. Or alternate dates if necessary for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, Counselor, uh, Kenyon made the motion, seconded by Councilor Jornton, uh, any discussion or questions of staff on this particular item? Well, I have some notes here, um. So for the public, uh, if these motions sound familiar, yes, they were here two weeks ago. And a cadre of councillors didn't like a legitimate vote of the last session to decide to. Bring it back and renew the motions, which is okay, it's on Robert's Rules of Order, that's good to go. But the realist here are fee waivers, which deprive the city of much needed revenue. So I received a call about four days ago from a longtime Oak Ridge citizen. And this person is disabled and, uh, uses a wheelchair for mobility. Uh, she was called, uh, me with concerns about the condition of the Green Waters Bridge surface. Uh, that goes across and, um. You know, we talked about it and she says, well, you know, I just don't feel safe in my motorized wheelchair going over that surface. And, um, it was due to deteriorated wood planking essentially, so Public Works has twice. Repaired this bridge surface, but it hasn't, obviously hasn't been effective enough. But I'll tell you that a repair like that, a complete repair, would be exactly something a fee waiver would pay for. Yet. This council turns a blind eye to any priorities for critical projects like these and they continue to grant fee waivers. Happily spending other people's money to carry out, to carry out favor, curry favor with organizations. Supporting whatever the current cause of the week is. Not that they're not valid noteworthy causes, the city just cannot fund every great cause that comes along. Just as you and I cannot give to every charity which comes calling for a donation. The council has repeatedly, repeatedly acknowledged the poor financial condition of the city. Yet refuses to take any action to increase revenues or significantly decrease expenditure. Fee waivers have become an expectation, not an exception. Some will say it is not fair to deny a waiver when so many previous requests have been rubber stamped by this council. The time is now to correct this fiscally irresponsible and reprehensible behavior. For those councils who argue against this, I suggest you go back. And read the growing concern in this year's, this city's twenty twenty two audit to understand how dire the situation is in Oak Ridge. Thanks. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollis.
I.
Counselor Chauvin.
May.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Uh, Mayor Cashion.
No.
Counselor Yarson.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Right, motion carries, on to eleven point one, business from the administrator, fire updates, James.
Hi, um, one of the fires, we're mopping up, uh, information from. First, I. That's it, I'm in eleven point one.
Okay. You got anything else for other city business?
Uh, yes, it's been a busy couple of weeks, uh, last week there was an infrastructure summit in Torvalds, which was very helpful. Some nice, um. Developers and. At, at the, at age you were, the, this was part of this. Last week and next week, we have the, we have the cities annual, uh, mention, which is the key. Uh, today, I'm at the WAC with our architect Wilson, um. Showing them around, so that the, uh, solar feasibility project is starting. And the, we're prepared are also. Starting and the issue. Still finding stages, but sometimes it's not an issue, yeah, but they're actually moving their roots inside. Um. As I mentioned earlier, uh, coming in two WAC grants last week. And Rick also coming in a grant at the L C D, um, studying grants. Well.
Do you have any questions on James' updates, looks like Counselor Hollis, maybe?
No, just praise for the staff and everybody working on the grants.
There, my eyesight's going, uh, any other, counselor have a question of James? James, the, uh, asbestos came out clean, or do you know?
Unfortunately, did not, um, however, it will not interfere with the current project to fix the roof, as you can, by code, you can have two roofs. On, and so we can actually kind of leave it in place for this, within the mid-range or whatever. Uh, the roofing, so, and it's not throughout the entire roof, it's just part of roofing, because we know the lack has had multiple. Hatch jobs done, so there is some of the asbestos in the roofing materials, but.
We'll just have to deal with that when we do the complete remodel of the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh. Down to item fifteen, which is department staff or board committee commission reports, fifteen point one. Parks and Community Services. Okay.
So, uh, last part, in the churches, the item to be discussed was, uh, the finally adoption by the Department of the Better Park. We discussed the truck updates and EV fast charging.
EV fast charging installations?
Yeah, we discussed that, yeah. Fortunately, one of the offers are for a type two, which is not a fast charging, which.
And I, I think you may have seen it, but again, like, so James, you know, a rapper is, and not a rapper. Uh, Lane Ledger has set aside a bunch of money for us to be determined. If we can get an R F P on a fast charger and we can see what they would offer us to pay for, how much they would pay for.
Right, um, but discussion, I know John Murray was, uh, the instruction on place in a park for a twenty thirty minute charge.
Asked him that very question, he said, there was, but, but no, I, you know, obviously I spoke ones, but after.
Yeah, and the granted, uh, ODOT is offering is not for that type of charging, so then the grant ODOT offering is more intended for rubber complexes.
Yeah, overnight stuff, yeah.
Yeah, overnight stuff, so, um, during the discussion, we kind of, it came to the conclusion that, uh.
an eight hour charging is not going to bring people to the account, so we don't, we don't worth our time and effort.
If I remember correctly, there's like, there's the quick charger and like there's a level three, one step down, which I thought we could, we could have accommodated, but.
EC charger, which work, which has a higher cost to it.
Yeah.
Do we know which ones at Best Western? It's not Best Western, it's the type two. I was just curious, I know that one went in not too long ago. So that means it's a quicker charging than the one we were.
To slower charge.
Oh, it's a slower charging.
It's, I know that there's a lot more people in the room, they're already educated on this than I am. Type, yeah, type two is four to eight hours.
Okay.
We'll, we'll charge depending on that, you. At least that's what it says in materials on about that. So I'm not an expert, that's.
Counselor Kenyon.
You mentioned that Lane Electric is offering some money.
Set aside some money for us if we can get an RFP for a charger that would determine how much they would be willing to contribute toward the.
How, how would it work if the city installed a charger? Is it something that we?
Get money off of it, yeah.
People pay to.
They use your cell phone and you, you, you charge, you decide what you're in charge for a rate, a minute or whatever, and then it charges your account on the cell phone app. And so the city does get some revenue to pay the expenses of.
Interesting, because obviously he uses electricity and it costs money. Okay.
Any questions on this? Okay, um, fifteen point two, Public Safety Committee. I'm not sure. I think Counselor Cook ready to go?
She had, she had a lot of.
Okay, um, Ms. James, are you in attendance or not? Can't remember.
I, I remember the other committee, I, I forgot.
We'll save it for the next time. Uh, fifteen point three, that's the Charter Review Subcommittee, Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah, I actually had to miss that meeting this month, but I'm, I think I could say with confidence that they continue to review the charter.
And you're having it twice.
And yes, we did, they did decide to meet twice a month, which will be on the second and third, sorry, second and fourth Thursday from six to eight P M.
Fifteen point four, Library Board.
I also attended that. I know we don't have a counselor appointed. And I did their minutes for them because they lost their, someone resigned that used to be their minute taker. And so what they talked about was planning for the upcoming silent auction. Uh, they had two resignations that we obviously had applications for tonight, which is awesome. Um, also they are hosting a chess tournament at the end of October. And in November, they're going to start reviewing some policy for some, uh, other people's policies so that they can create their own policy on censorship of labor.
Yes, thank you. Fifteen point five is Hodeck, James.
Right, uh, so we discussed various rants that we, we discussed, um, we also changed the meeting day, so it is now the second Wednesday of the twenty one five P M. It's brainstorming on how to attract, um, offices to, to, to ID. But.
Okay. Every committee, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I also missed this meeting due to being out of town and I was under yeah, I was in Portland. Like first. Um.
Oh, yeah, so, okay, I can give it, so we, we, uh, the annual committee is going to have a bunch of recommendations to council soon about how to streamline all the committee resolutions. Cause they are a little bit different and the committee has, um, it's next, I think it's really good recommendation on how to streamline and also, uh, few changes they want to, want to see. So we'll bring this to council hopefully by the next meeting, but maybe November, probably November meeting.
WAC Subcommittee, Counselor Hollitt.
Which committee was that?
Sorry, WAC Subcommittee.
The WAC. We met on Monday. We went over the final, uh, presentation for the um, outreach that was done by consort back in July, and we should have a summary report to the council at the next council meeting. And, um, I think that's really the main thing we did at that meeting. So yeah, there'll be more information at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, fifteen point eight is the WAC Funding Committee. Um, we did meet this month and, uh, got a brief from the architect on kind of the way things have been going and also looked at, uh, the food box grant and how they were going to execute that. Um, because they did receive a nice healthy grant from, uh, forget who gave the grant, but it's one hundred fifty thousand, which will pay for some of their stuff that they need, like a freezer compressor and that kind of thing. So, um, oh, good meeting. With that, um, on to, there any other business we have to discuss, Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah, I just thought of something when people were talking about something else, um, in, oh, it was because you mentioned you're going to the league Oregon cities conference, which is commonly something that the counselors attend, but I've been to a lot of them myself and, and you probably have. I don't know if you have, but anyway, I wanted to point out that uh, if you didn't sign up for that, there is a lot of training coming up through the league of Oregon cities every year in December. They put on training for new counselors. It's excellent. Um, training, even if you're an old counselor and you want to be refreshed on some of the, um, some of the rules that we need to follow. It's a really good session. Also, the way that they're doing it for the last few years is they, they hosted in different cities through the course of about a month and a half. So one week it'll be in Albany and one week it'll be in you know, Southern Oregon or something like that. So you pick the location that you want to attend. Um, depending on the dates that you're available. But they also do budget training every year and that usually starts in either late January or early February that you want to register at a time. And all of those can be found on their website, the Oregon cities. They have a whole section on training.
Thanks for that. I'm going to seventeen, which is public comment. Uh, anyone in the room have public comment for items not on the agenda?
I'd like to ask, is there any reason for anything that you would do that ever vote that against suspending the fee of, I'd like to point out, these people are profit agencies. The dog people are profit agencies, the buses are profit agencies. They charge a fee to come for people to come. So what you're basically saying is that pay the money in Oak Ridge is just fine to subsidize a foreign profit agency, and I'm one of the grateful that, or, uh, Oak Ridge, I'm not happy with it at all. That's my comment. If there are more profit, I see no reason to continue to subsidize. If you're saying, we're going to take your profit for the banking version, just not that you're not getting it, you're paid. So you better start looking at it that way because we're running out.
Thank you for, for your comment.
I agree as well.
I think, I, even though this town is always, I don't know how long it's always done the deed, but we're in bad shape financially. And if we, if we did have these businesses paying to be that could help with receiving the grants, it seems healthy. Even if they have a good condition. The last day coming up, I agree.
All right.
A, a question, um, but one, you can't, that's right now, but we don't have a, as the library board has had, that's, you know, the trend from the council. And I know we really enjoy being, kind of, a person, but we also can't be on it. So, um, it would be good to have someone
Understand. Thank you.
Maybe I make one problem.
Yes.
I just said, when, when the, the two fee waivers that were passed, they are both nonprofits, like the Boy Scouts of America and, and, uh, Dog Valor is five oh one C three, charity. I definitely understand the concern, uh, the budget, but I just want to point out with these events, it's, we're not really missing out on any money because the events just won't happen if they can't.
I would never.
Uh, because they told me that.
So the public, um, our property is worthless.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
We're, we're not getting that even at all. So they could lose to someplace else because our product's still good anyway. Why are you charging?
I'm, I understand it, because I just want here, these, these particular events.
Also, that's going to be a good motion that we all need to, for sure. Because I haven't seen any of these people hurt that much for the.
Yeah.
I don't think, I, what is going to change?
They, they, A, you can voice that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, it, 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 it.
Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah, I want to go also just point out real quickly to Boy Scouts of America. I believe their organization is nonprofit, even though they charge all the money they receive from the little kids that, that goes to pay for their patches and their uniforms and the different things that they need and their clothes.
So, people for this.
Okay, I'm talking, I'm talking right now. I'm sorry, you have to come. So I also wanted to point out that on the large events where we have done fee waivers, we've done them with a in addition to the motion that says, and to transfer the money from the TRT or RTM fund. So the city still gets the revenue for the parks that we are waving from the, um, the applicant, and the case that you're pointing out is the best fair, which to get them off of the ground, they are eligible for the first three years to, to request funding and fee waivers. And then it's written into our whole program that it, they need to become responsible on their own, but
we're.
Anyway, just pointing out, it still gets paid. The city still gets the revenue. Yes, you can look it up in our. It is not. It is, well, people that stay in hotels and motels when they rent a room, they pay a tax.
Counselor, would you agree that that's TRT that could be used on another important project?
Um, it could be, yeah, if we had one.
It's just a point of where I brought up the Boy Scouts of America is a five oh one C. Uh, they do own property, they're from the kids too. They use.
You have, you have a public comment?
Um, no, I'm, I'm just trying to, number one, where is stores of that?
This. James.
I'll give you, I'll give you a flyer.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing is that, yes, I know Boy Scouts is a big organization and whatnot, but the parents pay and the parents live here. So the parents, they're not super wealthy or anything else, but they want a wholesome activity for their children to do without going all the way to U G. So if we can, we can run or let them have to pay that or give them a few quarters or maybe like, as Kenyon said, a couple of years, maybe. In the end, we're helping out ourselves because we're helping our parents with their activities, with their kids on the weekend that are doing some construction so the kids aren't you, and the parents sometimes jump up at five o'clock to take their kid to U G for activity. We should, we should take care of our own Oak Ridge children here. And boy scouts, girl scouts, what age, stuff like that. I mean, I'm not, I don't have little kids, I'm in a bad mood. But I know that affects the children that live in this community. So if they might, you can say but it benefits the children that live in your community. So maybe we could talk to Boy Scouts of America and see if they could, they're not putting your money, let them pony it up. I'm not the parent for the troop that's here, but the parents pay. My son, they was in New York, but you know, I, I paid for my son to go to Boy Scouts. It was a lot. The uniform, the patches, yeah, the parents still pay. But that activity needs to stay local. The activity, we need to take care of our own stuff. That's, that's where I want to get a boost.
Thank you for your comments.
I have one really quick thing to say, I promise. I was a den leader for twelve years for the local chapter here, PAC sixty-five and troop one sixty-four. We are a separate entity from Boy Scouts of America. We are like self-contained. And with the amount of kids that are locally here that are from poverty homes, we offer scholarships, the lore for these kids. And so all these patches and books and neckerchiefs and the Cub Scout Day Camp, which is a hundred dollars per kid. We do a lot of fundraising, but unfortunately, a lot of these parents don't think they can afford to get their kids into Scouts because of the fifty dollar speech child. So when, when this is a, when they do fundraising and things, it's to pay for those things because it is self-contained. They don't get money from Boy Scouts of America. It's completely its own chapter, just like kids sports, just like all the other things Oak Ridge does. We're cut out from the main funding. So all the things that we do within Scouts is all self-contained. So these fee waivers, even though it's a, it's a hot topic. Um, it is to promote Scouts so that more people have a place to go. Unfortunately, Scouts is seen as a Christian-based organization and a lot of people frown on that. So having it always at the church where it's been in the past, they want to make it a more user-friendly venue where people can come and make it more of a community event, having the park there and everything. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it's not, oh, the parents pay. Some of them do. But a lot of them don't because they come from poverty backgrounds.
Thank you. I encourage counselors to read the italicized text below five public comment about conversation during public comments.
That's really fun that you mentioned that because you actually started the public discussion earlier in one point data.
Well, thank you for that. Any case, any other public comment? Looks like Counselor Hollitt, is that you clapping or do you have a question or a comment as well?
It was both. The clap was for Counselor Kenyon and SEMA and Counselor Brewer. I just wanted to echo some of the things that SEMA said in the audience. I work with a lot of the nonprofits and see a lot of their lack of funding. So I think it is the least that we can do as city leaders to support all of these groups that do these outreach things for our community and especially our youth. And to second what James said, if we don't support them, it's not that we're losing money, it's that they will not happen. They just won't happen here in Oak Ridge anymore. Our kids won't have these events. Our families won't have them. They won't happen.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
As well on that topic.
What's your name and where are you from?
My name's Steve Robinson.
Oak Ridge.
Your process. Uh, I see Green Waters is like one of the city's best assets and there's a cost to servicing, you know, these events. There's probably using electricity, they're deteriorating grounds, things like that. And I don't think it's appropriate to completely eliminate any type of fee now for a nonprofit. Maybe there's a discount structure, but we still are incurring the cost there. You know, I think that should be considered.
Thank you for your comment. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Please tell me.
All right, motion is adjourned, uh, made adjourned at seven ten. All right, motion is adjourned, made it adjourned at seven ten.